We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, October the 16th, 2025. Our invocation will be done by our own Ms. Emily Hardaway, Communications Manager for the City of Douglasville. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. Please stand for the invocation.
Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given us. I ask that you please be with our mayor and council as they hear business this evening, Lord, and I pray that you give them wisdom and discernment to lead our city well. And please be with all of us as we travel home after the meeting, Lord, and keep us safe. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Ms. Emily, we appreciate the invocation. Thank you so much for that blessing. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where business will be discussed this evening, but we will not vote on this information until next Monday at our regular voting meeting. So official action will be taken next Monday at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be time and ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates for you to discuss your business. And I'll go over a few protocol items, and then we will follow the agenda. There are some agendas outside if you'd like to have a paper agenda and/or you can follow us on the screen. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you receive a warning from the chair, if you make that mistake, and you receive a warning in the chair, if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in us asking you to leave the meeting this evening. Only one person speaking at a time. When you're at the microphone, please do not applaud, react to the speaker, speak to the audience, cheer, carry on a conversation, or be disruptive. Direct all of your comments and concerns to myself or the committee chairperson. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings. We're not required to accept public comments or other items before this council after we've heard the public hearings. We will accept comments on items at the end of the meeting, comments from citizens and delegates. Please do not rehash any information that was dealt with or under the agenda item for discussion during the public hearing. If you have a cell phone or electronic device, please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled this evening, and then we will start the meeting. The committee chairperson will read his or her agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions. After that, you respond to the questions. And the committee chairperson, if it's a public hearing, will say, now we have, the public hearing section is open. We have 20 minutes for those that speak in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those to speak in opposition. Each person has five minutes to talk. And if you'd like to speak to us, there are speaker cards or form that you should fill out and hand that to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Karen Callen, to my left, Assistant City Manager CFO. And she will put that information, give it to the city clerk, and they'll put it in the official records. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're not going to argue back and forth. We'll hear the information. If we can respond, someone from staff will give you that information or respond to your question. If not, we will get back to you at a later time. Please address your comments to the chair, and if your information is repetitive, we ask that we not go over the information over and over again, and the people get up and say the exact same thing. Our policy requires that printed information or materials like that will be submitted to our city clerk. During the comments from citizens and delegates, we will not address zoning items that were discussed during the public hearing. For each zoning application, the time to address those comments were during the citizens' comments when you have a zoning public hearing. After that, outside of that, the public hearing violates the Georgia State Zoning Procedures Act. So we will not, if there's a zoning matter and we have public hearing and you didn't have an opportunity to speak, when it's time for citizens' comments and citizens and delegation, please don't bring back up the zoning concern. We'll have to stop you from doing that because your opportunity will have been during the public hearing when the zoning portion was brought up. I know that's a lot of information. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. And now we will start the meeting where the agenda is presented. So we'll forego the presentations. We don't have any this evening. We do go by agendas for committee chairpersons. So we'll start with item number five, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you, Coach. Housing and Community Affairs, Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We will go back in tennis to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Okay, the ball is bounced back to you, Councilman Estes, Personnel and Organization Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also have no business under the Personnel and Organization Committee this evening.
Thank you, sir. Now, we do have business in this committee, Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a couple of items this evening, and with those items, we do have a couple of public hearings. So let me go ahead and start by reading off our opening statement. It says, "This evening, some of our items on our agenda will require a public hearing." Before we begin those items, I'd like to briefly review the procedures we follow to ensure an orderly and fair process. These hearings are conducted in accordance with Georgia's Zoning Procedures Act. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to ensure that all applications are reviewed fairly and impartially and in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance and adopted land use policies. For each zoning item requiring a public hearing, we will begin with a presentation from city staff outlining the request and any relative findings. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak following those presentations. The mayor and council may ask questions of both staff and the applicant. After that, we will open the floor to a public comment. If you would like to speak in support or in opposition to the application, please complete a comment card before approaching the podium. Comment cards are located near the entrance of the room and should be submitted to the city clerk before your turn to speak. Please include your name, address, and the item you wish to address, and, if possible, any specific questions you would like staff to follow up on. All comments should be made respectfully and directed to the chair. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and address for the record. If you ask a question, please understand that we will not respond immediately during the public comment portion. Instead, staff will attempt to address all questions at once before the close of the public comment, provided the information is readily available. Each speaker will be allowed to speak up to five minutes. We will allocate a total of 20 minutes for comments and support and 20 minutes for those in opposition. This is not a debate. Interruptions, outbursts, or other disruptions will not be permitted. There is a general public comment period at the end of the meeting tonight, but the city council cannot hear additional public comment during the general public comment portion on specific zoning items where the public hearing has already taken place for that zoning item. The mayor will cut off any public comment that refers back to a specific zoning item. And as a reminder, the mayor has requested that there be no applause or other demonstrations during the meeting. Please ensure that all electronic devices are silenced, and anyone who disrupts the proceedings will be asked to leave. With that, we can proceed. Our first item is item number 25-374, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 4.10.0G of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the required interior street sidewalks from 15 feet to 5 feet on a lot of 1.50 acres located at 8650 Club Drive and Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, being a portion of parcel ID A013, application by Norhaven Partners." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. This is a request for a variance to reduce the required 15-foot sidewalk to 5-foot. This is a requirement for the TCMU. This came about because we do believe this was in error within our TCM ordinance. And just to give you a brief again, this is for the Town Green Apartment Complex. This did come before you before. They have added a piece that they acquired from AT&amp;T, a portion of AT&amp;T. So they will need a few variances to be able to continue with joining that parcel to the main part that you have already reviewed. So with that, yes, this is for the interior portion sidewalks only.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gray. And for the, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm sure you guys may recall, when we saw the original application, there was a chance that we were going to be seeing this one as well later on down the road if and when they were able to acquire that property. Okay, I see some heads on that. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay. Do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray? Coach?
As far as the error in the ordinance, I forget the last time we addressed this. At some point, will we be able to clean that up and fix that within the ordinance so that we don't have?
Yes, we will propose a text amendment to that.
Got you. Okay, we just hadn't got to that point yet.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, a quick question. Is this, this is referencing, if I understood you correctly, this is just referencing the variances on the portion that's been added to the site from?
Yes.
So in this case, with the 5-foot sidewalk, you're talking about the sidewalk that's running along the edge, sort of between the two property lines, kind of east-west?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll make sure I'm identifying the right spot. Thanks.
Absolutely.
And the applicant is here.
Wonderful. Well, if the applicant would like to come on down, then?
Trip Dunn, HRC Engineers, 6554 Church Street. As Dana stated, this is an addition to the parcel that was previously rezoned. These variances have all been passed for the original tract. This is a 1.5 acre tract. And as Dana said, this was just a typo, we believe, in the original TCMU ordinance. So we're just requesting a change to go back to the standard 5-foot sidewalk.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of the applicant? No? Okay. At this time, let's go ahead and open up that public hearing, then. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request, if you'll please come on down and give us your name and address for the record. If we don't have anyone, we'll move along. If we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. If we don't have anyone, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, and we will move along to the next item, which is item number 25-375, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for variance from Section 8.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance regarding tree locations in the parking areas on a lot of 1.50 acres located on 8650 Club Drive and Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, being a portion of parcel ID A013, application by Norhaven Partners." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
All right. This is a request for a variance to waive the requirement for a shade tree every 15th parking space. The staff is recommending the following condition. The developer will donate $1,500 per tree for a total of two trees to keep Douglas beautiful for the purpose of tree restoration throughout the city. So if approved, they will just be not required for two trees, and that donation will set forth from the condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray? No? Okay. At this time, if the applicant would like to come down, and we can address this item.
Trip Dunn, HRC Engineers. So yeah, this is also a variance that was approved for the original tract, and we're just trying to make sure everything is the same for whenever we join these tracks. And so, yeah, we agree to the conditions that the city is proposing.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of the applicant regarding this? No? Okay, thank you so much. At this time, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of this item, I think I'm going a little backwards, but if we have anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of this item, if you'll please come on down, give us your name and address for the record. And if not, we'll move along. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And if not, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move along to item number 25-376, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 9.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow construction within the city's stream buffer setback on a lot of 1.50 acres located at 8650 Club Drive and Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, being a portion of parcel ID A013, application by Norhaven Partners." Mr. Dana Gray?
Okay, this is a request for a variance to allow construction within the city's stream buffer setback. And staff is recommending the following condition. The developer shall restore the existing stream buffer in the area that is not encroached upon prior to the approval of the land disturbance permit. Provide all parking stalls and aisles within the 25-foot impervious setback utilized a certified pervious pavement system, for example, pervious concrete, porous asphalt, or permeable interlocking pavers, designed to retain a minimum of 1 inch of runoff. The system must be designed to install, per Douglasville-Dougus County Water and Sewer Stormwater Regulations, and include an infiltration layer as appropriate. A record long-term maintenance agreement is required, subject to annual inspection by the city and/or county. So with this one, they're only disturbing about three to four parking spaces. So within those three to four parking spaces, they have the option of doing those impervious pavers or the other choices that they have to do, which could be the pervious concrete or the porous asphalt. So they're just, they're just encroaching just a little bit into that parking area.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray? Madam Mayor?
I do have a quick question. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Gray, so you said inspections will be done by the city or by WSA?
Or by the county.
Oh, or by the county?
Yes.
So whoever deems it necessary?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay. If the applicant would like to come down, then? If you have anything to add to this?
Trip Dunn, HRC. So the, the stream buffer was previously disturbed by the existing jail. So we are proposing to restore the areas that we are not encroaching upon. So, and we agree to the conditions by staff for the types of material that's to be used in those parking spaces.
Thank you for that. Yep, it sounds like, I know that's something that we had to talk about in the last application process, and it sounds like you guys have already went ahead and gotten a head start on that, so I really appreciate it. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of the applicant regarding this item? No? Okay. Well, in that case, let's go ahead and open up that public hearing. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this item, please come on down, give us your name and address for the record. And if we don't, we'll go ahead and move along. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to you, please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And if there is no one, we will close the public hearing and take this item up on Monday. Thank you so much. Next item, item number 25-377, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from general commercial to TCMU town center mixed use for 1.50 acres located at 8650 Club Drive and Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, being a portion of parcel ID A013, application by Norhaven Partners." Mr. Dana Gray?
Okay, so when this came before you before for the larger piece, that piece was zoned PSP, and it came before you to zone it to TCMU, which you all approved along with the variances. So in that time, they proposed a slip-deck, and they were in the process of acquiring the portion of the AT&amp;T site with knowing that they would turn that part into surface parking. So being that they acquired that piece, now they are proposing the surface parking. That part of the parcel is zoned GC, so they have to rezone GC to TCMU to continue with the other portion, which they would join at a later date. So the request is to rezone GC to TCMU, located at 8650 Club Drive. Let me put my glasses on. So the building is next to the Town Green, which was approved by you all. The parcel for the AT&amp;T building is totaling about approximately 1.5 acres, and they will use that parking in lieu of the slip-deck for the surface parking. We do have a condition that staff is recommending. Development plan must be approved by the city engineer and community development director before the land disturbance permit application. And that concludes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that you guys went ahead and got all those conditions lined up for us. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions regarding this item? No? Okay, that's pretty simple. Does the applicant have anything to add to this? No? Okay. Well, this one also is a public hearing, so if we have anyone here who would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And if we don't, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and take this item up on Monday. And we will move along to the next item, which is item number 25-429, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 8.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the required parking to the left of the development from 31 spaces to 29 spaces, and reduce the required parking to the right of the development from 45 spaces to 35 spaces on 2.14 acres located on Fairburn Road and Dallas Highway and Land Lot 51, District 1, Section 5, partial IDs C005 and C028, application by Wintercrest Inc." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
All right. This is a request for a variance to reduce the required parking to the left of the development from 31 spaces to 29, and then reduce the required parking spaces to the right of development from 45 to 35. So this is a parcel that is located on Fairburn Douglas Highway. It's kind of across the street from the back of CVS and next to the school bus depot. So it's, yeah, so it's in that little triangle site. So they are subdividing the site, and they're going, they're proposing a Chipotle and a Whataburger. So that concludes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
And the applicant is here.
Council, did you guys have questions of Mr. Gray before the applicant comes up?
I'm excited about Chipotle coming a little bit closer in.
That's absolutely right. Not having to cross over the Chapel Hill Bridge?
I know.
Me too. Okay. Well, then, if the applicant would like to come down, please?
Evening, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49 in Douglasville. This is Brian Hatcher. He is the engineer who worked on this project. He can give you some details about the site that you see before you. Thank you, Dana. The variance request deals with this property at 5955. I had a hard time finding it. If you go to the McDonald's on 92 near Longhorns, look like you're going towards Chick-fil-A, Checkers, and CVS, and then turn left before you get to Checkers. Go to where it intersects 92, and it's across the street, right there.
Okay.
The applicant has the project under contract to construct the two restaurants that you just heard noted. The location, as you see, is interestingly shaped. It would be, it was impacted in part when the DOT acquired the right-of-way that created the wedge that you hear before you, that you see before you. And it creates these angles that make significant problems with respect to the development. The variances are, as you heard, the one that deals with landscaping and the other with parking. I'll do them in the same order that you have them, Madam Chair, on your agenda. The code requires for the larger parcel, that is, to the right, for the proposed restaurant, that's 3,400 square feet, which is 45 spaces. The request is to be reduced to 35 spaces, as you hear. For the smaller site to the left, for the proposed restaurant, 39 spaces are required. We are asking for a variance down to 29. I will note that there's a drive-through for the proposed burger restaurant, so a lot of the traffic will be circling the site, we believe. And then for the other restaurant, that would be just to the left, there is a pickup window. So we don't think we're going to be harmed by, and in fact, the proposed user is comfortable with, provided you are the proposed variances. But it's in the code, and that's why we're here. Questions of a technical nature would have to come from Brian. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add to that?
No.
No? Okay. Madam Mayor and Council, do you guys have questions of the applicant? Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. I think, not to say whether I'm for or against, still trying to soak, let the information soak in, but I think for restaurants now, that probably would be okay for reduction in parking spaces, especially since you have, like, people don't really sit down a lot of times at Chipotle. And if you have the drive-through for the Whataburger, just fast food or trying to pick up something, Chipotle's healthier, but you're not sitting down for the most part and eating. So I think the reduction in the spaces, it's only 10 per side, 10 per restaurant. It isn't, you know, it's a percentage.
It's 10 for the larger side for the burger restaurant. It's only two on the other.
Oh, two, okay. So that's a, that's not bad. All right, thank you. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. Yep, and I completely agree with you, Madam Mayor. Anytime I feel like I go into an establishment like that, if I have to run in to get something, they're always empty because people utilize those drive-throughs. There's not a whole lot to sit down. Well, if there were no more questions?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. So sorry.
No problem. I'm looking at this site plan. You've got two entrances with only one exit. So exiting from the Whataburger, you're going to have to go past the Chipotle. Am I understanding this correctly?
You will, yes, sir. It's a write-in-only.
With that being a drive, drive-in, drive-through, is that going to cause congestion issues outside of the Chipotle?
It should not. They're both, they're both counterclockwise traffic patterns anyway, so the Chipotle pickup window, the way a pickup window works is really it's a mobile order pickup, so you're not, you're not stopping at a menu bar and ordering, so you don't, your stack's not as far back typically. So the, the leaving traffic would be in front of the store, not going around their drive-through. So it really shouldn't have a traffic impact on that, that parcel at all. Then they're both leaving the site where you've got a free right, and then you've got a signal for a left, so.
I was about to say, there is a signal there, so that's helpful.
There is a signal there, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. If there were no more questions, let's go ahead and open up that public hearing. If we have anyone here who would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And if not, we will move along to the next item, which is item number 25-430, says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 8.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the landscape buffer from 10 feet to 5 feet on 2.14 acres located on Fairburn Road and Dallas Highway and Land Lot 51, District 1, Section 5, parcel IDs C005 and C028, application by Wintercrest Inc." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us."
All right. This is a request for a variance to reduce the landscape buffer from ten foot to five around the periphery of the property, and this will allow them to, this will help them to design the property, um, more efficiently with the drive-throughs.
And they will be surrounded by like uses if, for whatever that's worth it, if that helps you guys with that. Um, Madam Mayor, Council, did you guys have questions of Mr. Gray? No? Okay. And, yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler. Yep. If you guys would like to come down and go over this item with us, I'm sorry, I think, I'm just getting tired now.
Setback for always important. Ten to five is almost essential. It is essential on this site. Fortunately, what's behind it is the bus barn and it's a good bit of separation from this site to the Burnett Elementary School. I checked on the county's website and you can see there's a significant space. So it's a reduction, of course, from ten to five, but there's no adjoining property that we think would be impacted by this, so we, again, respectfully request your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, do you guys have questions of the applicant or Mr. Fowler? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open that public hearing then. If we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And if we do not have anyone, let's close the public hearing. We'll take the item up on Monday. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Very good. You get a gold star. That was a lot of items. We appreciate you, um, bringing them to him and, and the applicants as well. Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. You do have the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
Yes, ma'am, and we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, the vice chair for Public Relations Committee is Councilmember Elena Hudson. Do you have any business?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll get to public relations, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, vice chair for Public Safety Committee is Councilmember Watts. Do you have business?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have, uh, just one item tonight, to consider approval of an application for an open container day permit for Friday, October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, from six PM to ten PM on West Courthouse Street for the eighth anniversary celebration of Blue Rose Art Bistro LLC submitted by Michelle Spence Jones. And, uh, one of these ladies coming forward is gonna handle it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Victoria Collier, Main Street Coordinator, six seven zero one Church Street. I'm here today with Ms. Jessica Frazier from the Blue Rose. I'll have her take it away.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jessica Frazier, twelve four four one Veterans Memorial Highway. So we are celebrating eight years downtown historic Douglasville with the Blue Rose Art Bistro and, uh, the very first of its kind in that area. And so we have been celebrating with like a block party, including the community, because that's how we thrive, is with our community. So we wanted to, um, actually just take you guys up on what you've started with the entertainment district and, um, yeah, just make it even bigger than the year before, last year.
Okay. It's not coming up.
Do we have any questions or comments? I got thrown off there. Do we have any questions?
Mister Chairman, thank you, Ms. Frazier, for coming in, um, and our staff. Appreciate you guys so much.
Thank you.
So it's a, it's not a block party that day, it's just open containers for, I mean, that week, it's for the one day?
Just the one day. We were gonna celebrate on the thirty-first. Our eight-year mark was in September, but we had a lot of, um, things going on and, and Michelle and I was traveling in September. So we wanted to, you know, pull it together, uh, before, uh, the end of October. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
So just one day.
Just one day for open containers?
Few hours, yeah.
You gonna be outside?
Outside, yes, ma'am. And, and we put in the application to block that street, so it'll be like just, uh, the dancers, 'cause that's a Friday night, they'll still be dancing, but just in the center. And, you know, we're just gonna celebrate.
Okay. Now, we've had some concerns about the parking area from the other, two or three other businesses. Have you all had a conversation with them or is it?
No, 'cause our neighbor, which is a salon, would be closed.
Okay.
Um, in that regards, but we will still, uh, have a conversation because I think that's a part of one of the, uh, criterias and just let her know what we're planning to do, just, you know, just in the event that she might have a late appointment.
Right. Yeah. Please do. Let's go.
And I'll be sure to communicate with PD, um, Public, Public Service as well about road closures in our local businesses, so.
Okay.
I'll be assisting with that process. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much. That's all I had, Mister Frazier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilman Estes had that look on his face, like he had some.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not, I mean, this is fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Eight years is definitely something to celebrate. I just had a quick question. How's everything going since you had Bar Rescue?
It's been going amazing.
Yeah?
Great, yes.
Had, has there been an episode on TV yet?
That airs, um, at the beginning of the new season in December.
Okay.
So we should be the first show.
Hey, put it, put it out on Facebook when, when you get the date, so we can all watch.
Please send it to us.
I'm thinking we do a, a watch party.
All right.
Oh, yeah, that would be fun.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Happy birthday.
Yep. Yeah, congrats.
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Um, if it's all right with, um, can a, can an item like this go on the consent? Okay. We'll go ahead and put that on the consent agenda.
I think it's fine.
Thank you very much, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Collier? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all we had tonight under public safety.
Thank you so much, Coach. We appreciate you taking that committee. You do have the next committee, which is Recreation, Culture and Tourism. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Yes, ma'am. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
To adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Douglasville to accept two grant awards from the United States Tennis Association, uh, otherwise known as USTA, totaling twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, consisting of the USTA Build It Forward Grant in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and the USTA Tennis Venue Services Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to support the resurfacing of seven tennis courts at Hunter Memorial Park and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents related to the acceptance and administration of these grants. And Mr. Penn will take it from here.
Uh, yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, John Penn, seventy-seven, seventy-five, Jesse Davis Park Drive. Uh, yes, for this item would be for two grants with, uh, USTA. One would be the Build It Forward Grant and also the Tennis Venue Services Grant. Uh, I think the last time we had our tennis court resurfacing is about twenty nineteen, so they're about time to get them resurfaced, so we can ensure that the access is safe for everyone and there's top quality to, uh, for our program and for our tennis.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Couple, couple of questions. I forget, is there, uh, how many of those courts are set up for pickleball also or if any?
Uh, none of those are set up for, uh, pickleball. The pickleball courts are up there.
Right. Up on, up on the hill. Okay. I thought so. Um, and that'll make the tennis players happy.
Oh, yes.
Um, also, what time of year are we looking at possibly if we get the, do we need the grants to do the resurfacing or is that just gonna help? It's gonna be done anyway?
We did budget for it, but it'll definitely help.
Okay. And what time of year are we looking at?
Uh, so actually, we've already been getting quotes and everything, so it should be already probably by the end of the year.
All right. Any, any other questions on this item? Madam Mayor?
I do. Thank you so much, Coach. Thank you, Mr. Penn. We appreciate you doing the presentation. Um, so the tennis courts and there, is there a match? It's a grant we just, we just blessed, we gonna get the money?
It is a matching grant, yes.
Okay. So it's a matching grant. And, um, as the coach mentioned about the timeframe, I thought it would have to be a certain temperature for you to, to, to do the resurfacing. Are you gonna perhaps have some heaters out there? 'Cause right now, one day, my lemon tree, I'm trying to grow a lemon tree, he's all happy and then the sun comes out and then it gets cold and he come back in, so I think, wasn't there something like a, a temperature requirement?
Yes, it can't be too cold. So, yeah, we are looking at probably in November to be able to get that done. So it, it would be before that time, before it get too cold. Really, but that time of year is probably around like January, February, where it gets too cold for them to be able to do that.
Okay. All right. That's all I had.
Disturbing fewer tennis players at that time of year, yeah.
Correct.
I mean, there, there's still some, some that come out. Any other questions or comments, uh, Councilman Estes?
Um, number one, this is fantastic that we have been awarded these grants. Um, for non-tennis players, if you don't regularly resurface the courts, it ends up being a much more expensive endeavor because the, the underlayment cracks up and, and, I mean, it, it can be two and three times as expensive. So this is fantastic. The timing is perfect. Thank you.
We, we have quite a bit, uh, we have quite a few teams, alter teams and, and, uh, USTA teams using our tennis courts, so it's good that we're keeping up with them. That makes them happy. If they're happy, then my wife's happy, so. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
A comment. I just, if Director Bass, do you mind coming forward?
What's you doing hiding back there?
No, he sees.
Director Bass?
So Director Bass, if you can tell us about Mr. Penn, we wanted to congratulate you. I know you received an award recently, so we want to shout you out because we're proud of you.